Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, July 13th, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any flaws or error.
Thank you. Welcome to the meeting this evening, thanks for social distancing as best as possible. All right, moving on, we have to approve the agenda for the evening, do I have any requests for changes to the agenda? Entertained a motion to approve the agenda for the evening?
I'll make sure to approve the agenda.
All right. Motion Commissioner Golding, do I have a second? Second for Commissioner, to me, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, agenda's approved. Moving on, the minutes from the meeting held on Monday, June 22nd, 2020. Do I have any requests for edits or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the planning commission meetings dated June 22nd, 2020.
Motion Commissioner Farr, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kirk with a second, all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. All right, moving on, we have one public hearing this evening, and that is for the lots at Anderson Reserve, 2020-02. This is a request for a guide plan change from medium density to medium high density on 2.85 acres. Planned unit development concept review on 2.85 acres. Planned unit development district review with waivers on 2.85 acres. Zoning district change from rural to RM-2.5 on 2.85 acres. Site plan review on 2.85 acres. Preliminary plat to create one lot and two outlots on 2.85 acres. Will the proponent of the project please come forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
If you could state your name and spell for record and tell us about your project, do you have a PowerPoint?
Certainly, it's okay if you take your mask off?
Yeah, if you're more comfortable, it's fine.
It is, thank you. Glasses don't get steamed up with the mask. My name is Peter Worthington, I'm with MW of Properties, 7645 Lindell Avenue, South in Richfield. And we have a short presentation about us and the project. And, Julie, turn to the next page. We'll talk a little bit about our experience, summarize the project, talk a bit about our approach to property management, our development schedule, and talk about a few of the issues raised by neighbors, I'm sure you're gonna hear more tonight. We have been developing affordable housing for about 20 years. We currently have about 28 properties in our portfolio that we own and manage. And we have only sold one property in our career, we're long-term property owners and holders. We have in-house property management, so we are very, take great care in what we develop and how we manage it. These are a few of the recently developed projects. Ours are fairly modest in size, ranging from 45 to 60 or 60 or 70. They're not large projects, but we try to make them as high quality as we can. These are some of the projects under construction right now, and a couple that we're planning to start in the next couple of months. Site we're talking about is 9360 Hennepin Town Road, right off of Hennepin Town Road. And just give a little perspective on the next... There's our site plan, and you can see that it's a rectangular lot, we've got the building oriented towards the south side of the lot, with the parking towards the north and the access on Hennepin Town Road. The next slide is just a little bit further removed, you can kind of get a sense of where we are relative to Anderson Lakes Parkway and 169. And to the north is the Preserve Village with a grocery store and hardware store and Starbucks. So it's a great location... Next slide, Julie, thank you. It's a great location for multifamily. Direct access to the Hennepin Town Road, you don't have to go through, we're not putting more traffic on neighborhood streets. Easy access to Anderson Lakes Parkway and 169. You can walk to the Southwest Transit parking ride, which is not running right now, but I talked with them and they're planning to reopen as soon as there's demand. And I told them about the potential for a multifamily project, they thought, well, that would help the demand and cause it to open sooner. We can walk to grocery store and other shops at the Preserve Village Mall. It's a short drive to Eden Prairie Center, and it's a short walk to the Preserve, the regional park. We're proposing a three-story building, three stories over underground parking. Our projects are modestly furnished, we don't have a large amount of amenities, we try to put the quality into the materials and into the systems for a long-term value. We do have in-unit laundries, we do have parking that's provided in the rent. We provide, we're bike friendly, we put hanging bike racks at all the parking stalls, we have a fixed station for the bikes. And then we incorporate as many green features as we can. We meet the guidelines for the overlay to the enterprise green communities. We work with the Excel EDA program to find ways to improve the energy efficiency of the building. We will have a couple of electrical vehicle charging stations. We will have rainwater harvesting for irrigation. And our building will be solar ready, the roof structure will be designed to be solar ready as well the electrical system. And then we, of course, have energy star appliances. We're proposing 53, 52 apartments, 13 one-bedrooms, 25 two-bedrooms, and 14 three-bedrooms. The average size around 740, 890, and 1100. And the range, the rent limits, as you can see, they're modest. They're based upon this being a tax credit project, so we have to comply with guidelines. All the units will average at 60%, we'll have a few that can do 80%, which means there are some that would be less than 60%. And that's the AMI that we're targeting. This is just an example of the types of occupations some of our residents have. We've got a combination of seniors and retirees, as well as actively working people in a variety of positions. Property management's very important to us, we have onsite property manager. We don't manage it from a distance, we have somebody who's there during the day. We also have onsite caretaker and maintenance staff that will be responsible for the property. We are, we put a fair amount of money back into the building every year. And because of the nature of how we're funded with a tax credit program, there are lots of people looking over our shoulders and looking at the, inspecting the building multiple times throughout the year. So we pay a lot of attention to the quality and to the maintenance. We have a very stringent rent approval, applicant approval process. Valero manage it, they do a credit and criminal background check on every tenant when they're applying. They must, the tenants must show the ability to pay the rent, the tenants are responsible for the rent. There is an extensive verification process for every adult ranging from identity verification to employment verification and benefits, banking information and prior rental history. We go through a very prolonged process. Criminal background checks is done on each state in which the applicant has lived, not just in Minnesota, so we look past, we look back. And any resident displays activities illegal or dangerous or causes damage to the property or fails to pay rent or receive lease violations, including potentially up to conviction. In general, our development program would be, if we're fortunate, we'll have land use approvals late this summer. In December of this year, we'll begin the closing, the closing process, the closing of the financing, and start developing the full drawings. We would intend to close the financing in April of next year and start construction. Construction will be done in a little bit less than a year. And because of the demand for the type of housing that we're proposing at the rents that we're proposing, we'll have no difficulty in filling this Eden Prairie, we expect to be full by September of '22. Okay, some of the issues that we heard through the, through the neighborhood meeting. Nobody wants multifamily next door, we get that. The city has guided this for multifamily and, and hope we could see from, from what we showed earlier, it's really quite a good location for multifamily. Why 52 units? Well, we need as many units as we can get, we're, we compete for the, for the tax credits. And there are a number of scored criteria involved in that process, but one of the scored criteria is meeting cost containment guidelines. And basically, every year, they look at the, all the applicants, figure out what the average development cost per unit is, and if you're, if you have, you have to stay below the 50 percentile of that. If you're above that, you're gonna lose out on points, and the point is so competitive that those points are too precious to lose. So we have a lot of fixed costs, you know, putting in the driveway, putting in the utilities. There's, you know, the building itself, whether it's a few units, we still have the elevator, we still have the marketing office, we still have the staff. So we have a lot of fixed costs that we try to spread over as many units as we can in order to stay below the cost containment guidelines, so we don't miss out on getting those, getting those points. Because without those points, there's, there's no project. Julie? One of the concerns is the removal of the trees for the parking lot along the north property line, meaning loss of privacy for at least a couple of homes. We get that, so we, we are, of course, have a landscape plan that shows new trees, but we know they're not the same as the mature trees. So in response to those concerns, we are, we would be planning to put a privacy fence along the north property line where we took the trees down. One of the other concerns was about our potential for our residents to cut through the neighborhood, to take a shortcut to Jerry's, to get access to some internal pathway within the Preserve. Actually, when you measure it out to get front door Jerry's, it's actually a shorter distance to go down our driveway and up Hennepin Town Road sidewalk. And if you're going to Starbucks, it's by far shorter, so there's really no incentive to cut through the neighborhood. Another concern was about this being apartment residents looking into house windows. Well, we are about 140 feet, I know the staff reports as 125, we think we're closer to 150 feet from the corner of our building to the nearest house, which is to the south. And actually, we're not removing trees south of the building, so the, the, it would be very difficult to see through there. And the houses to the, the distance from our building to the houses north, there's even further than that. So we don't see that as a concern. Noise and light, we will comply with the ordinances, the staff report has already indicated that we're complying with that. And in terms of the noise, again, disruptive behavior will be taken care of by our property management group. Lot of concern expressed that this kind of development will hurt property values. We hear this all the time, actually, the literature doesn't suggest that. The literature suggests that a well-designed, well-managed project and maintained project will not hurt property values. And in some cases, there are situations where projects like this will increase. But in this neighborhood, I would not, there's no evidence to suggest that property values will be harmed by our project. And those are my comments, I will take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any initial questions from the commissioners, yes, Commissioner Mehdi?
I'm just curious if you've reached out to the neighboring property owner of the land just to the south. I believe it maybe is owned by the Preserve Association. What kind of conversations you've had with them, if you ever tried maybe at the beginning to buy that land as well? Can you kind of give us some history there?
No, we've never reached out to that, we never were interested in buying that land. We, we believe that it's probably not buildable because it has wetlands. And, and because of its shape and its dimensions, hard to imagine anything being built there. So we've, we've made the assumption that's likely to stay a green space indefinitely. And that's kind of why we oriented our building toward the south of our property, so that is as centered in green space as possible between existing single-family homes.
Is it something that you think you would consider if, if the density is the issue, owning that extra piece might be a way to reduce, number one, preserve the trees that are, you know, on that land? Not making your development any bigger, but then kind of coming in line with the density?
Sure, understood. It's a matter of the cost. And again, we're facing this cost containment issue. And we're, we're, we're pretty much right at where the containment figure was last year. You don't know until you get into the round of applications what the number's gonna be for a given year. So it's hard, it's hard to see how we can... If the, if the cap stays about the same, it's hard to see how buying more land is gonna solve that problem.
And last question, are you applying for 9% or 4% tax credits?
9%.
Okay, thank you.
Julie, would you like to respond to one of those?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, to answer Commissioner Mehdi's question, I believe that vacant property to the south is owned by the Preserve. It was part of the open space that was set aside as part of the larger Preserve project. So it would not be available for inclusion in another project because it's already been set aside as part of the density that was allowed in the Preserve project.
Thanks, Julie.
Other initial questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't put too far, we'll have more questions. Julie, we do the planners' report this evening?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the applicant is requesting several application approvals from the commission and the city this evening. They are requesting a comprehensive guide plan amendment from medium density to medium-high density residential. They're asking for rezoning, a preliminary plat, a site plan, and a PUD with waivers. As the developer mentioned, the project does include a 52-unit apartment building that comes in at about 18.25 units per acre. The current comprehensive plan guiding of medium density on the property allows for a zone, excuse me, a density range of 5 to 14 units per acre. So as you can see, the requested density exceeds what is currently designated as part of the comprehensive plan. As part of the ASPIRE 2040 comprehensive plan that was approved by the city last October, there was consideration of this parcel as well as other parcels that were identified as infill properties. An infill property is one that has development potential but is surrounded by existing either residential or commercial industrial type of development. And as a part of the comprehensive plan process, you know, we take a look at what the city's current inventory of different land uses are. Through that inventory, we found that the city has a significant supply of single-family homes that were built during the city's boom, if you will. And through the community engagement and focus groups that were conducted as part of ASPIRE, a common theme that was heard through those outreach opportunities was that the city needs a variety of different housing types. So then taking a look, taking that feedback and looking at those infill properties, the city looked at, how can we accommodate that request or that need within the community? So this property was one that was guided for medium-density residential development, as I said, allowing that 5 to 14 units per acre. And there were some site-specific considerations that were taken into account. For instance, this property fronts on a major collector roadway that is intended to provide for increased traffic count. Also, the configuration of the property, it's long and narrow, it does not provide an inherent connection back to the existing single-family neighborhood. There are wetlands on the site that make the site a little bit more challenging to develop for additional single-family residential. So all of those things were considered as a part of determining what's the appropriate land use designation for this property. The zoning, or excuse me, the guiding that the applicant is requesting is the medium-high density residential. That category allows for 14 to 40 units per acre. Like the medium density, it does allow for vertically and horizontally stacked units. So things like apartments, condominiums, senior housing can be accommodated in both the medium and the medium-high density categories. The property is currently zoned rural, that is not atypical for Eden Prairie. It is rather routine to see properties prior to development remain zoned rural until the time a development proposal moves forward, and a rezoning consistent with the comprehensive plan is requested at that time. The applicant is requesting a rezoning to RM 2.5, which is the high-density zoning district, if you will. And that would correspond with the medium-high guiding that the developer is requesting. If the property were to be rezoned consistent with the current guiding on the property, staff would recommend that it be rezoned to RM 6.5 because that zoning district corresponds to the medium-density category. Within your staff report, staff provided additional information about other projects that are similar in nature, whether that is similar in unit count, height, distance from existing single-family developments, as well as parcel size and density. So in order to provide some context as to what this property might look like upon development based on the proposal, there were some examples of other locations that were provided in your staff report for the, excuse me, commission's consideration. As I mentioned, the site does have wetlands on the east and west ends of the property, so the site plan does take those into account. There is a woodchip trail that is proposed along the western ed, or the western wetland that butts up directly against the single-family zoning district in existing single-family homes. The architecture of the proposed building does meet the city's requirements that are in the zoning district or zoning ordinance, as well as in the design guidelines. From a building materials standpoint, the project also does comply with the building material requirements, with the exception of one of the facades is just a slight bit short of meeting that 75% Class 1 materials. I think they're coming in at about 73%. So that would need to be revised to meet that 75%. But on the size of facade that it, that, that is occurring, as well as the small differential, that shouldn't be an issue in order to meet that 75% requirement. The project does include an affordability component, as the developer talked about. The majority of the units being available at 60% AMI and a small amount being available at 80% AMI. And there is additional detail provided in your staff report about what that means from a dollar standpoint and types of, or excuse me, not types, but amount of income that corresponds to that 60 to 80% AMI. And the developer touched on that as well in his, his talking points. As I mentioned, the site is on Hennepin Town Road, it's a major collector roadway. And those roadways are intended to move traffic from local streets to arterials. So a roadway of that classification is intended to carry a capacity of about 1,100 vehicles per day to 6,300 vehicles per day. In 2016, when the last traffic count was done on that site, there was approximately 3,500 trips per day. And this project, based on the traffic analysis, proposes to add about 285 trips per day. There are several waivers that are requested as part of the PUD process. The first waiver is with regard to density and site area. Those, those waivers really go hand in hand, if you grant, if one is being considered, you're automatically gonna trigger the other one. The density that they are requesting, as I mentioned, is 18.25 units per acre. And the site area that is required by code is 2,500 square feet per unit. The developer's proposing 2,387 square feet, so a little bit shy of that 2,500 requirement. The next waiver that they're requesting is with regard to the group usable open space. So in your staff report, you'll find additional information on group usable open space in order to provide a little context. This is a waiver that the city has routinely seen come forward as a part of multifamily projects that have gone through the review process lately. This provision has been in the zoning ordinance since the beginning of Eden Prairie having zoning ordinances. So given the fact that there have been so many waiver requests at, at the rate that they are requested, that leads staff to believe that the requirement might be outdated and require a little additional research and updating. Clearly, multifamily projects since the early 1970s have evolved, and the trends are different in those kinds of projects now than they used to be. So in your staff report, you can see how this project falls fairly in line with what the group usable open space that has been proposed with other recent development projects. But as I mentioned, that is an item that staff will be taking a look at further to understand if that requirement should be updated. The last waiver that is being requested is with regard to parking lot, specifically the parking stall length and drive aisle width. Parking stall depth is required at 19 feet, they're asking for 18 feet, and a drive aisle width of 24 feet rather than the 25. This, as well as a PUD waiver that has been requested on a variety of other projects, the city has approved that on other projects and found those dimensions to be functional. So as a part of overall parking code updates, this is a provision that staff is looking at as well, is likely in need of an update, but that is an item for a different evening that we'll discuss with you at that time. The landscaping does meet code requirements. The tree replacement for the site, because as you can see by visiting the site, there's a fair amount of trees on the site. Tree replacement is a distinct requirement from landscaping. And the site, as proposed, does not meet with plantings, the tree replacement requirement. However, as the commission is aware, there is an option to pay a payment in lieu of for tree replacement. So the approximately 350 caliber inches that the project is short on tree replacement can be made up through a payment in lieu requirement that is allowed by city code. And then, I, lastly, I wanted to mention that the developer did conduct outreach to the neighborhood, as he mentioned in his presentation, there were multiple platforms. First, there was a website, if you will, where he shared information about what the project was, allowing residents to submit questions. And then based on that feedback, there was also then a Zoom meeting, a more real-time type of meeting that occurred. And that feedback has been generated through that process and has been shared with you. There are multiple emails that were received that were a part of your packet. There were also, I think, six emails that we received from folks after the packet went out. Those have been printed out and provided on the table, so they are part of the public record, just the same as those that were submitted prior to the packet. So all of that information has been provided to you, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Julie. Any questions for the city at this point? Commissioner Mehdi?
Julie, I just need a quick refresher on the tree replacement calculation. And that just depends on how many existing trees there are on the site, but is there a specific percentage of existing inches that needs to be replaced?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the tree replacement calculations are based on the size of the trees that are out there. So if a tree measures 12 inch, 12 inches or more, it is a significant tree, and that needs to be replaced at a specific rate. If a tree is, I believe it's above 30 or 32 inches, it is a heritage tree, and those are replaced at a higher rate. So anything that is less than that 12 can be removed without any, triggering any replacement needs. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions for the city at this point? Mr. Chair? Yeah, Commissioner Farr.
Two questions, Julie. Many of us were on the commission when we had to review the ASPIRE 2040 comprehensive guide plan, so I remember some of these uses changing. Could you tell us, would, would you ordinarily locate a medium-high density use next to a single-family use? That's not what happened, it was a medium-density use put next to a single-family use. But are there other instances in the city where we have purposely or strategically located a medium-high density next to single-family?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the, I'm trying to recall the infill map that is included in the, in the ASPIRE document. My recollection is there is roughly 30 parcels that were identified as infill, so I'm not gonna pretend to know all of them off the top of my head. There very well may be a medium-high that is next to some existing single-family, but I'd have to take a look at before I could verify that.
Okay, at least there's no off the top of your head.
Not off the top of my head.
Something that we have as a, as a thou shalt not rule within zoning to do that.
I don't recall one off the top of my head, Mr. Chair, members of the commission.
Thanks. Second question, there's a speed limit of 45 miles an hour along Hennepin Town Road at this location? And I've heard that we have plenty of capacity in the road, there's been questions about safety. Would this development trigger a relook at speed limit, if not other? If not, other issues about the roadway?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the speed limit, as you indicated, is 45. The, I wouldn't think there'd be any need to, to look at revisions of that speed limit in this case. It's a fairly straight road. It's got good sightlines, and the volumes are within reason, so I would see no reason to, to adjust that.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any other questions for the city at this point? All right. This is a public hearing. Anyone that would like is more than welcome to come forward and speak for or against this project or offer other comments to the board, the commission. I'm just going to go through the list here where, I'm going to start with just calling names and going through who asked to speak, and then I think there might be another sheet, and then you're also welcome to step up if you decided you wanted to speak after this. So first one that signed up is Aaron Pomerantz. You could come forward, please. Good evening. And what I'd like to do is just have everyone go through and just say what you'd like, and I'm just going to gather themes, and we'll ask the developer to address those themes.
Sure. My name is Aaron Pomerantz, and I'm a resident in one of the surrounding properties. I live off of Clark Circle. I'd like to start by stating I'm opposed to rezoning this property to medium-high density because of the following reasons. I have three main points. The guidance plan developed by the city is medium-density development. The city put immense amount of effort into the Eden Prairie ASPIRE 2040 plan, and we believe it's important to maintain that long-term vision. We've had, we made a petition, and we've had over 450 Eden Prairie residents sign that petition, asking for the guidance of that lot to remain medium-density. We know that this lot needs to be developed at some point, so we, we feel that this lot fits well for construction of townhomes or duplexes, which would we encourage the developer to explore. My second point is that we are concerned about the environmental impact that this would have on the wildlife in this area. There are over 40 houses in the Preserve neighborhood that would either back up or would be in view of this three-story building. This is a unique neighborhood in Eden Prairie, the Preserve Association, where wildlife roam in and out of backyards. There's deer, fox that live in that wetland area that would be directly impacted. So we strongly encourage the developer to complete an environmental impact study on this area, as well as keeping the mature heritage trees that you addressed. My third point is we can, are concerned about sound. In addition to the visual barrier those heritage trees provide, they also act as a sound barrier, and it's right off of 169. It's a very loud highway. A townhome or duplex would allow for many of these mature trees to remain, providing that natural sound barrier. I do have two questions for the developer. My understanding is that they will connect a sewer line from the building to the Clark Circle sewer line, so we are wondering who is responsible for that sewer line, if that should fail. And two, what does the developer envision for snow removal? If there's no, I know you stated there may be a fence. Right now, there is a problem with the drainage in that area, so we are considering a large, this large building that will be developed there, where will it drain to? And it will, will ultimately drain in the backyards of Clark Circle. And even now, with just even a light rainfall, those backyards accumulate with standing water that actually ducks swim in the pot, in the, those backyards. So those are my two questions and my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's Mike Amundsen. Please correct me if I say that wrong. My apologies. Good evening.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Mike Amundsen. I live, I have an adjacent property, and I live on Garrison Way.
Do you want to pull the microphone just a little bit? I speak up just a little, having a little trouble hearing you.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to share some of my concerns about this project and why I'm opposed to it. I'm concerned with the amount of traffic coming in and out of this property. I ride my bicycle on that path on Hennepin Town Road. I'm concerned about having hundreds of vehicles coming in and out of there every day. I'm also concerned about the fact this will have an adjacent property values. If this were like a luxury apartment building, I feel that, that I'd have more confidence that this would be very highly maintained in the future. I'm concerned about the safety of my neighborhood. Having 100 new neighbors in very close proximity to me makes me feel a little bit uncomfortable. I'm also concerned about the privacy of the backyards for those of us who have adjacent properties. Having a three-story building, although, you know, compatible with city code, is undesirable for the residents around it because it allows for the possibility, people will have a high vantage point looking into our private backyards and houses, you know. I'm also concerned that there is no berm or fence planned to be put around the entire property, not only for visual appeal, but to ensure that the residents don't take shortcuts to our properties. I'm also concerned about the, you know, visual appeal of my backyard currently is this single-family house on this property. Having the heritage trees cut down and looking at a three-story building really isn't what I planned when I bought my house there 16 years ago. I'm also concerned about that this will look out of place in the neighborhood, you know, all of which have single-family homes. This would be the only three-structure vicinity, or three-structure building anywhere in the vicinity. I'm concerned that since there's no smoking in these units, that there will be a designated smoking area outside, and those smoke will, you know, permeate onto our properties, which is undesirable. I'm also concerned with the increased amount of noise, not during the construction, but also having, you know, massive increase in the number of new neighbors in my neighborhood in a relatively small area very close by. And I'm also concerned about the open space for a property like this. It seems like it's trying to be crammed in, for lack of a better term, in a space that it's too small for. I think there's this, that having a smaller density unit, which wouldn't need rezoning, would be more appropriate for this location. I value the open spaces we have in Eden Prairie and hope that you will respect the wishes of the neighbors in the neighborhood, such as myself. Thank you.
Jeremy Simonson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jeremy Simonson. I live on Clark Circle, the property that is...
Just pull it down a little bit.
How's that?
Perfect.
So Jeremy Simonson, live on Clark Circle, own the property and live at the property that our backyard basically borders the, the property that's looking to be developed right now. So I just, I have some, some comments about, you know, opposition to this, this proposal, also just some general questions, comments from the staff report. So, so first of all, I'd like to state that I, I am opposed to the rezoning of the, the property to the medium-high density range, and also opposed to any, opposed to any potential to waiver request from that RM 2.5 multifamily zone request as well, due to, so that the, the placement of the property is, is unique in relation to the, the single-family homes that do, that do border that property. And from what I can tell, it, the, the layout of it is much different than other apartments in the city that do border other single-family homes as well. So it, the horseshoe design around that property is just very unique. Also, you know, as, as Aaron mentioned, the city has put a lot of work into that guide plan, and that development is purely outside that guidance. Considering it is such a sizable building with the associated abundance of parking, sitting benches are proposed in the western part of the property, also the, the mentioned walking trails are, are planned on the western edges as well. I just don't feel that this necessarily fits within the, the narrow layout of the property. Also considering from what I can tell in the staff report, there, there is potential of the wetland pieces of the land would be deeded to the city. So that from my calculations would, would basically lower the 2.85 acres, which from, from my standpoint should create a much smaller profile of, of buildings as well. So, so based on the, the city's recommendation of, of medium-density and the 6.5 multifamily zone, I feel like the, the land is much better suited for a townhome or duplex-profile building under that zone guidance. I feel like this, this profile buildings would flow more naturally with the, with the surrounding neighborhood homes, based on height, size, parking, and, and lighting. Also, I have some additional questions, comments regarding the development. Now, it, it wasn't cited in the staff report, but the developer did, did put it in their, in their presentation that they, they do plan on fencing. I, I think this is imperative around the entire property because these are private backyards of, of the, of the surround, of the surrounding homes. And I think with, like I mentioned before, the, between the parking lot, walking trails, sitting benches, you know, I think that's most appropriate, something significant in terms of fencing around, around the property. So my, my questions are, in regards to fencing, are there plans that are significant that would basically, would, would there be basically input provided from the neighborhood when the, when the development, the developer is looking at plans for fencing? Also, within the staff report, the mentioning of deeded pieces of property to the city, I have a few questions regarding that. Basically, what are the, what are the party's responsibilities for that land? So basically, what is, what is the city's responsibility? What is the developer's responsibility for that deeded land? How is that property accessed? Who is allowed to access that property? And again, questions on fencing or berming, who would be responsible for, for that as well? Also, the, the commentary in the staff report regarding the tree replacement plan, so it sounds like from what I understand, that it does not, the, the replacement plan does not meet code, but there's some sort of cash payment alternative that the developer could work with the city on. It's my understanding those funds would be allotted for basically any park project within the city. So my question to this is, you know, opposed to doing it, why not just require the developer to basically adhere to the code and the associated cost? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Matthew Eich.
Yes, right here.
I have a feeling I didn't get your last name right.
It's Eich, yes.
Oh, it is? All right.
Yep.
Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I live on Hampshire Lane, which is basically our property butts right up to Hennepin Town Road. Many of the concerns that I have regarding this development have pretty much been addressed as I've been here this evening, listening to the conversation. The one thing that I would like to ask the developer, and I apologize if I missed this in the discussion, but my concern, based on my knowledge, is that the income levels are basically at Section 8 level requirements. And so my concern is that this development would end up being Section 8 housing. And I'm not saying anything about, you know, the, the families and the, the folks that lived there, they're all wonderful people, but I'm coming in as a perspective for the values of the homes in the area. The median household, or rather, house value is roughly 280,000-ish. A lot of the homes back there, the, the townhomes are under that, maybe capping 250. So we're in that situation that if this was projected to be a Section 8-type housing, that would affect our property values almost most definitely. The single-family residences in the area, many of the homes are, you know, above that 280, up to probably 400-ish, maybe 450 mark for the single-family homes. But where this is going to be built predominantly, a lot of the townhomes are going to be in that area. So that was my concern. I was just wondering if perhaps that could be addressed, you know, what the long-term goal is here with the development.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get that for you. Thank you. I think that was the last one on this list. Kay Paulson.
Good evening. Kay Paulson. I live in Sherwood Place, which is roughly three blocks southwest of this property. So I go out Linden Drive morning and late afternoon and dinnertime. It is very difficult to make a left-hand turn, and so having 283 more cars coming and going on that road would make it difficult. Also, you know, last fall, that large senior housing was just put in, just a mile down the road. So that is adding a lot of impact to our neighborhood, a lot more housing than we have been used to. I would oppose having the house, the, the rezoning to the medium-high density. If we could keep it at the medium so that they could have townhouses, twin homes, things like that, I think that would be better for the neighborhood. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. Stephanie McPhail.
Good evening. Hi. I'm Stephanie McPhail. I live on Squire Lane, which is not immediately adjacent to the property, but it is not too far away from where some of these other folks this evening have, are located, such as Hampshire, et cetera. But I do walk past this property almost daily, and I'm kind of coming into this tonight on just respect and behalf of the wildlife in Eden Prairie. And I think one of the things that I think about is in the Eden Prairie, in your ASPIRE 2040 report, you talk about the need for green space and trees, addressing that there is increased positive health impacts associated with increased, increased tree canopy in developed areas. And I think that's why many of us bought our homes in this area, was because of the mature trees and the beautiful greenery in the space. I'm wondering why we even have to develop this space in the first place. I'm concerned about the impact of runoff from impervious surfaces at this planned property into the wetlands, whether that's from cars or from any pesticides used on any green spaces. And I also worry about the removal of mature trees. And perhaps you are aware of a report released by Audubon and Cornell back in 2019 about how 3 billion birds have disappeared. That's about 33% of our birds since 1970. And there's many reasons why, one of them being pesticides, another one being window collisions, another one climate change, but habitat destruction is also part of that as well. So thinking that altering this little, small piece of land isn't part of the problem makes us a continued part of the problem. As also addressed tonight, residents have concerns over coyotes and other wildlife, and the continued fractured, or fracturing of habitat means that residents in this area are going to start seeing more coyotes in their backyard, which has the potential for conflict with that as well. I do have some requests, just thinking that this project is probably going to move forward, and so here's what I would request for the developer. I see according to the plan that there is construction to be starting in April of 2021. That concerns me in regards to the removal of trees on the property because that is prime nesting season for migratory songbirds. I request that the property uses bird-safe glass. Consider... I request that the property uses bird-safe glass, considering that this is going to be a three-story building, the tallest in the area. Bird-safe glass would help prevent collisions from birds. Bird glass collisions are a major concern with high-rise buildings, and while three stories is not technically high-rise, it is quite high for the area. Additionally, the property should only plant native plants and not use pesticides or chemicals on any of their green space, because then we're just putting that stuff into the wetlands, which we're back at square one then, with trying to protect them. So I am opposed to the rezoning of this property, and thank you.
Jamie Jensen?
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jamie Jensen. I live in the Preserve. My wife and I have lived there for about 36 years, and I appreciate the opportunity to address you folks this evening. I'll keep my comments short. My biggest concern about this project is it seems like we're putting five pounds of potatoes in a four-pound bag. The other part that's becoming apparently, very obvious to me, and I'd like all of you to consider, is the fact that we're all spending inordinate amount of time and energy to stay six to 10 feet apart, we wear masks, and now we have a proposal in front of us to increase housing density. One of the things I think we've all learned in the last five or six months, locally, nationally, and probably worldwide, is that population density certainly doesn't help pandemic management. I don't know how long we're going to be in this situation, but it doesn't make any sense to me to increase housing density in lieu of COVID-19. Who knows what's going to happen with the next pandemic, COVID-20, or any other numbers beyond? So with that in mind, think about that when you decide how to cast your vote for this, whether this is a healthy, smart thing to do. I don't think it is. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Alright, I believe I've gotten everyone that's signed up. Did I miss anybody, or would anyone else like to come forward? You don't have to sign up. Okay. And Julie, I don't, there's no one in an overflow or anything here?
[inaudible]
Okay, and everyone can hear out in the atrium?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing, have further discussion with the developer.
I'll motion to move the, close the public hearing.
Alright, a motion to close the public hearing from Commissioner Marcos to have a second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Higgins, a second. All those in favor of closing public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, public hearing is closed. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We will try to work through them and get answers and have further discussion. Let's see where we start here. Maybe, I heard a lot of, we heard a lot of comments regarding the environmental impact, the trees, the wildlife. Mr. Worthington, would you mind coming forward and maybe have some discussion around that?
Sure.
Thank you. Could you talk a little bit about what you've done in regards to concerns around the environmental impact that you may see?
Yeah, sure. We did the critical habitat assessment report required by code. Wank Associates did that for us, and they identified three potential, I think the expression's threatened species, a snake, a bat, and a bumblebee, and, but they determined that there was, that the habitat suitable for those species probably did not exist on this site, so there wasn't a concern. We are, in fact, going to be in our planting program, we're planting bee-friendly plants anyway. But the habitat assessment report we did would indicate that we don't have any issues. No environmental impact statement as such is required for this development.
Could you speak to a little bit about any plantings you're doing? Are you looking at native species, or?
I'm sure our landscape architect knows that we try to put native species wherever we are. I'm not intimate with the landscaping plan, but I'm sure that it'll get certainly reviewed at the city level to make sure we are doing that.
And would you mind talking a little bit about the drainage piece of it?
Well, sure. Obviously, we have to develop an acceptable stormwater management plan, so in fact, the water will be much better controlled than it is now. We have two underground filtration vaults that will provide quality control and rate control. Ultimately, we discharge into the same wetlands that now lead across the street, across Hennepin Town Road. So we will be putting in underground systems that will control the rate and provide filtration as that water is allowed to go flow through the wetlands, then on into the marsh across the street. In addition to that, we have the rainwater harvesting, the water off the roof of the building will go into a system we use for irrigation.
And there's a question about, is that wetland being deeded to the city?
I'm sorry, say again.
Is the wetland being deeded to the city?
Apparently, the city requires that if it's a, if it's a wetland, it'd be an outlaw, platters outlaw, excuse me, and deeded to the city. The acreage still counts towards density, but it's a matter of how they preserve the wetlands. So that's what we'll be doing.
And Julie, the city would manage that wetland, then?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the city would take title to that as part of the approval process, and it's my understanding then that it is for preservation and maintenance purposes, and so the city would take control of that.
Any questions at all from the commission about the wetlands piece or the environmental And just, I guess, one more follow-up about the trees. Did you, do you have anything you could to save the trees that you could at this proposal, or?
Yeah, obviously, we prefer not to take trees down. It's difficult. We, most of the trees on the south edge of the property are untouched. There are trees along the north side where the parking lot is, that's where the most significant loss of trees would be. That's why we talked about adding a fence along the north property line where the parking lot is, where the most trees are removed. Yeah, but without removal of trees, there's no way to build any buildings.
Could you talk a little bit about the fence? We heard a few comments about what kind of fence would be, and what kind of input you'd collect, gather from anyone?
Sure. Julie, can we put up a site plan, maybe?
Can we have the PowerPoint on the screen, please?
One more, there we go. And I wish I could point. Well, you can see the parking lot, and the parking lot is on the north side of the property. And where those, where it's shown...
Sorry?
That's where the most significant tree removal is that affects the neighbors. And so we haven't done research yet, but we know that we're, the plan is to put us, I think the city allows up to a seven-foot-tall fence along the property line. So that's what we'd do, a solid fence, not a, not an open chain link or anything like that. It would be a solid fence, opaque, so for privacy and to block headlights along that north property line, along the, between the parking lot and the north property line. Did I answer your question?
Yes. Does anyone in the commission have questions about the fencing or anything? Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, not on the fencing, but on the, on the wetlands. Frankly, in my experience watching this occur over a number of years, I have a lot more confidence in the city's ability to maintain the wetlands than, not you specifically, but frankly, than any other property owner. So I think having the wetlands deeded to the city is a positive, and have the city take control of that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Worthington, if you could, we heard, I guess, I kind of categorize them as maybe livability questions or concerns. Could you talk a little bit about any concerns you'd see from safety of current residents or, you know, potential smoking outside or smoking areas?
Sure.
And just general noise, and potentially the, remove all the trees and the barrier from Highway 169?
Sure. Well, let's see. Barrier from 169. We are removing trees. Of course, we're building a building, which is also a barrier of sound. We have, I can't, you know, we haven't studied the sound transmission. I'm not sure how much of a concern that truly is, and not how much we can, we can do anything about that. In terms of noise from the building, we have buildings that are closer to residential properties than this, and we have not had any issues with that. You know, as I said earlier, our property management group will, will not tolerate disturbance, but we really haven't had that kind of a problem. In terms of light, you know, we meet the guidelines of not delivering too, more foot candles at the property line than is allowed. Oh, discussion about fencing around the property. You've heard the concern about our residents cutting through backyards. I'm not sure why anybody thinks that we're more inclined to cut through to trash pest than other people are, but in terms of doing that because it's a shorter route to the Jerry's Food Store, it's not actually, you know, to get to the path that you have to get to to get to Jerry's without trying to go through the wood fence that's on the north side of the preserved property. It's a longer route than walking up Hennepin Town Road. So I think that's kind of a, there's no reason to think that's going to be a problem. We have, as I said, we have buildings that are, three-story buildings that are closer to neighboring, existing neighboring neighbors than these are, and we've not had any issues with that. You know, the closest single-family home to our corner of our building is 120-some feet or 140 feet. It goes up from there, and that's a pretty sizable distance. It's a three-story building, the top of the third-story windows is about 28 feet. It's not, it's not a massive, it's not a looming high-rise building. And most of the trees along the south property line aren't being, are not being touched, so that we still have that visual and sound barrier. So we've done what we can to minimize the impact.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners about any of those? Alright. Could you talk a little bit about the question related to the AMI and income levels?
Sure.
About the long-term plan?
Sure.
If there's one?
This is not Section 8 housing. We do accept Section 8 vouchers. People are allowed to use sources of funds to pay the rent, but this is not a, there's no, no, what they call project-based Section 8. The rents are paid by the tenants. If they have some extra sources of income, that's fine, but this is not Section 8 housing. The rent levels, if I can get my sheet out here. Somewhere in this pile, I have, there we go. So we're targeting the 60% AMI. For a family of two, that's $49,680. That's certainly not low income. For a family of four, that's $62,000. So this is, you know, I think the concerns that people have about this being Section 8 are unfounded. The income levels that we're going to have are going to be greater than what a lot of people are thinking they're going to be.
Thank you. And then, another theme we heard quite a bit was the traffic. Could you talk a little bit about the traffic study? Maybe the city wants to weigh in as well, I'm not sure.
We did have, we had a traffic engineer do a analysis based upon the Traffic Engineer's Trip Generation Manual, which is the standard. And the traffic is not, is not that, is not that significant. If I can find it, the page here. No, they're in front of me. Yeah, the, the total daily traffic is about 283, 285 trips per day, but a key metric is peak hour trips. And if I'll get that out. Key metric is peak hour trips. And so in the weekday morning peak hour trips, total of 19, put on by this, by our 52-unit building. Total PM, in other words, afternoon peak hour trips, 23. So yeah, there may be a lot, maybe 283 trips during a day, but during the peak hour, which is where most of the concern seems to be, it's not a whole lot of impact. And the, you know, talking about our request for 52 units versus the guided 40, that's an additional five morning peak hour trips and six evening peak hour trips. The difference is not very, not very dramatic.
Yes, Commissioner Tumer.
Hi.
When was that study done?
It was done for us this past spring.
So after people started staying home, then?
Well, it's not, it wasn't a traffic study. They didn't put traffic counters out there. This is just analysis, how many trips we'll generate. It's not a study of how many trips are on the street now, it's how many trips we will generate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
There are other questions around traffic? Yeah, Commissioner Higgins?
Not so much upon the traffic as we're talking about. But it occurs to me that there are possibly going to be children living in development of this type, along with their parents. And what, if anything, has your experience been about? School bus. That is a very difficult spot where your folks are going to be coming out. I assume that's where the buses may want to stop. I don't know if we have any experience here in the city with similar circumstances where you have a lot of traffic. I used to live over in that area, and I know what that feels like over there.
No, we have not had any discussions with the school system about the buses. Typically, we, when we have a development and as we start developing, we then talk to the schools and they figure out, you know, until you, until you have the people, the tenants in place, you don't know who's living there. You don't know whether you have many children, school-age children, preschool-age children. So until, until that becomes more clear, it's all kind of speculative. I know just recently, I spent a fair amount, we just opened a project in Bloomington, opened in April, I think, during a tough time. And for the past four to five months, I've been communicating regularly with the Bloomington School District about, as we're filling up and we got to, began to see the profile of our residents and the profile of the children, and how many were moving from other locations already in Bloomington, so to determine the net impact on schools, we were communicating to that so they could start their planning. But until, until we start getting residents signed up, you don't really know.
Thank you.
Other questions around the traffic? And then lastly, I think the other real, probably the most common thread was the concern about going from medium to medium-high. You talked about a little bit, but could you just kind of circle back on that?
Sure, sure.
I mean, we're talking about 12 units, basically, isn't it, right?
That's correct. It's 12 units, 52 versus 40. Again, as I said earlier, we compete with many groups for the funds, the tax credits, and we need to be as competitive as possible, otherwise there is no project and you don't get the affordable housing. Townhomes, well, we don't do townhomes. Somebody might be able to make it work there. Nobody's been, nobody's tried it yet. Townhome doesn't have the kind of density that you get with a multi-story elevator building. It seems unlikely to me that somebody is going to make a go of that, that's going to have the kind of price range of townhomes you would like to have. But somebody might be able to do it. That's not what we do. It's not, it's not the way to get the most affordable housing into the community.
So you feel 52 is that bare minimum in order to be competitive?
Yeah, at the moment, that's, that's what we're focused on. As I say, until we get into each year's rounds of applications, you don't know what the target is for the cost containment. Seems hard, it seems unlikely that it would work at 40, but certainly doing townhomes or for-sale product is, is not what we do.
Okay, thank you. Other questions from the commission?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner.
The surface parking...
The surface parking, the number of units for surface parking, is that just based on how many you need that don't fit underground to meet the requirements for that size of building?
Yeah, that's correct. We are able to get 54 units below, underground, and we needed two stalls per unit, so 52 on surface stalls.
Okay.
We would love to build less parking, Julie. Anyway, that's for a different day.
Other questions from the commission?
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Further discussion from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Farr.
I'll start off. I'll be honest, I'm torn on this one. I really like this development model. I think they're trying to do good things. They've showed us that they have done good things in our state, around the metropolitan area, and I'm generally for their initiatives. Some of the design points that have been brought up, I think the congestion on the road is manageable. I think we have extra capacity on the road, and if there are speeders, we can do something about that. If there's some conflicts in the future, that can be managed through speed limit or enforcement. I like the design of the building. It's got a variation on the roof line, it's pleasing materials. I don't think it would be an eyesore to look at. Affordability is certainly, you know, a positive step in our city's goal, housing goal, and it kind of checks all the boxes. We thought about that during the 2040 Aspire Plan, and again, I think this is a good location for this use, especially since it's close to transportation and services. I think the location really couldn't be better, even though this is an infill site. I'd like to talk for a minute on this, about 150-foot distance between the building and the other residential single families around. There's been a lot of talk on that. That gives a lot of space for a variety of screening solutions, that 150 feet, but more so, when you look at the site plan, the building is, you know, east-forward, that rear third of the property that they're deeding to the city for the wetland, won't be, won't have tree removal. And when you count the single-family lots that abut the property, and you subtract those lots that are on the wetland abutment, you're only left with two properties that are abutting the portion of the property where the apartment building is. And so, I'm sure unique and strategic screening solutions could take place by planting trees on that neighbor's backyard, fencing, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think that adjacency between the single-family home and the multi-story nature of this development is an issue that can be managed as well. Not in favor of, just for the sake of density, exceeding our Aspire 2040 plan, going to medium-high density. I would like to stay with what we had worked so hard to achieve last year. I know going from 52 down to 40 is a lot from a percentage standpoint, and maybe what bothers me the most is that if they can come back with 40, I think it's going to look a lot like what you're seeing tonight. The building will be shortened in length, but not height. Everybody who looks at the next plan, if it comes in at 40 units, they're not going to be able to tell the difference. It's going to look pretty much just the same volumetrically, it's just going to be a shorter length building. And so, they might have the same complaints. So, I'm not necessarily thinking that just because we're going to put our foot down and say no to the comprehensive guide plan change, if that's the wishes of the commission, that all of a sudden, we're going to come back with townhouses or something smaller like that. I'm sure the cost of this land is a lot of money. I didn't hear that their homeowners association stepped forward and made an offer on the land, so they didn't want it to protect themselves, even though next door, they do have some land set aside for green space. Taking off my real estate hat, you know, I wish that I could just reconfigure this whole development so that it could turn 90 degrees and be parallel to and up to Hennepin Town Road, and there could be a land swap between the triangular parcel that the homeowners association owns and this parcel. The developable area maybe could go up so that they could get their 52 units and be in compliance with our medium density. That would be a win-win for everybody. There's greater setbacks, greater distances to the single-family lots. I don't see a lot of downside to that, but that's a huge real estate hurdle that I can't imagine overcoming, but that's something that maybe could be explored. So, for now, I'd like to stick to the 2040 plan of our current guiding, but those are my observations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kirk. Commissioner Farr, as he does many times, has spoken very eloquently and happened to speak to almost exactly my perspective as well. There are a lot of positives for this type of housing in our city, and it's something that we as a city really need and really want to see. I don't believe it will be a, to be very blunt, a blight on the neighborhood. I think it would fit into the neighborhood well, and I think it will be a very positive addition to the city. However, I share Commissioner Farr's comment about density. Just to speak to a couple other things. Frankly, drainage, when you develop this property, any drainage problems you have will improve. They will not get worse. They will get better for the neighborhood. Secondly, with the city controlling the wetlands, they will be better protected than they ever have been before. And it supports our Aspire 2040 plan and the vision that we have for the city. But I also happen to share Commissioner Farr's comment about the density. It's a little bit of a bridge too far for me on the density. I voted against, not in exact parallel, but I voted against the Martin Blue development a number of years ago, Mitchell Road and Highway 5, because I thought it was too dense. That actually has worked out, but I'm still leery of pushing the density too far, and I think more the 40-unit level is a more realistic thing. And I agree with Commissioner Farr's comments about if we, if this developer goes away, something else is going to come there. So, the environmental issues, the wildlife issues, the heritage trees, all of those, we're going to have to figure out a way to minimize the impact on the community, because there will be an impact. And part of our job here is to minimize that impact and make sure it's as positive as it possibly can be. But there will be, because somebody will develop that land. So, what we have to do is find the best solution, and unfortunately, what we have in front of us isn't quite there yet, from a density standpoint, in my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk. Other comments, discussion? Commissioner Mitty.
I share a lot of the same feelings as these other comments. I do like the proposal, and I think, again, a lot of people don't probably appreciate what it takes when you're going through the tax credit program and what that means in terms of the quality of the housing, and not just with the tax credit program, but your lenders and everything. I mean, the maintenance that, you know, you're having to follow and everything, you know, this, I have confidence that this will be a great, or would be a great project and well-maintained. And I, just a couple of comments on some of the discussion items. I do agree that there should be a fence along the north parking lot to help screen. It does seem like a lot of the trees being planted along the north are spruce trees and, you know, would help in addition to just help more of a visual barrier. The traffic issue that people bring up, you know, again, I don't think this development is contributing to the traffic issue, and it seems like the issue is a little bit of a separate discussion entirely, which is, the issue is people, you know, using that road to cut through and skip the traffic on 169. I don't know if there's a solution that makes it just harder or less convenient for people to use that as a shortcut, but I don't, this, it does not seem that this development is impacting the actual traffic on this road. So, you know, this, you know, comes down to, I think, the big issue is the density. And when you look at the surrounding neighborhood, you know, I don't see a lot of, you know, just naturally speaking, it kind of looks like this should be at most medium density, which is what we have guided for. As we're talking about any development, I'm just trying to go through in my head why we might, you know, agree to go beyond what we've guided and what kind of things that might necessitate that or allow, be worth, you know, going against what we already have in our land use plan. You know, this is providing, meeting some of the goals that the city wants to reach, but given the comments from the neighbors and frankly, what seems to be the whole neighborhood being against this, I don't, I don't think that there's, it's in our right, in this case, to kind of overthrow the neighborhood comments and go against what they're saying. It seems like not only does the land use plan guide this medium, but everybody kind of thinks it should be medium. It looks, from a real estate perspective, that it should be that. So, I'm in support of keeping it at the medium density. And I understand, again, the economics behind affordable development, and that would probably shut this project down. I don't think there's a way that they could make it financially feasible at 40 units. So, I hate, you know, turning it down because of that, but I'm kind of just sticking to the argument of it's because I don't think this site should be medium-high density.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitty. Other comments?
I guess, I agree with my colleagues in this. I'm pretty torn on this as well. There's a lot of good things about it. I agree with Commissioner Kirk's statement that drainage and management of wetlands will improve. I also, we have seen many, many data that we need more affordable housing and better housing options for residents, and it's something the city continues to work for. I just, I kind of feel like the Aspire 2040, I feel like the ink is not really dried and it's not even in place, and we're already trying to amend it. I felt, I agree with everyone that we've done a lot of work around the plan, and I think we should stick to it at this point. But that being said, I think the developer, I believe that he builds nice properties, and I think it's great that he manages, keeps and continues to manage them rather than selling them. I think that's a real plus for the neighborhood, but I just, I think we need to stick with the 2040 as well. If there's no other comments, does anyone want to make a motion this evening?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kirk.
Move to recommend that the project maintain consistency with the Aspire 2040 guiding of medium-density residential with a density of 5-14 dwellings, dwelling units per acre. In order to maintain consistency, the plans must be redrawn using the standards of the RM-6.5 zoning district. Because the redraw would require rezone and different waiver requests, further staff analysis will be required.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kirk. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Commissioners, Commissioner Farr seconds. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
And would anyone like to abstain? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance tonight. And Mr. Worthington, I hope that there's still an opportunity to be creative, so. All right, moving on, planners' reports tonight, Julie?
No, sir.
All right, do you have any members' reports? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
All right, motion, do I have a second?
I will second.
All those favor adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Peter.